Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Common Council of the City of Huntington for November 12th, 2024. Prior to the beginning of the business meeting, we'll have an invocation led by myself, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Kristi McElhenney. Those who wish to participate may rise at this time. Please bow with me. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this evening and the blessing it is to come together in service to our neighbors. We ask that your Holy Spirit would continue to guide and direct the wisdom of this council, and you would help us to earnestly pursue truth, justice, and love for our neighbors as we seek to serve. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, we'll call the business meeting to order, beginning with a roll call.
Brodugem.
Present.
Chapman.
Present.
Felton is absent. Funk. Johnson.
Present.
Pike.
Present.
Renssberger.
Present.
And thank you. And having established a quorum for the conducting of city business, we'll move along to opening a public hearing regarding ordinance 20C24, an additional appropriation from the General Fund, American Rescue Plan dollars, and Riverboat Fund. Are there any members of the public wishing to address counsel on the matter this evening? Okay, not seeing or hearing it this time, we will close the public hearing on ordinance 20C24. There will be further presentation on the matter later in the meeting. Next item on the agenda is minutes from the previous meeting of October 29th, 2024. Is there a motion to bring the October 29th minutes to the floor for consideration and adoption?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion and consideration of the minutes by board members, council members. Not hearing any this time, we'll call the question in favor of approval of the minutes as submitted. Kristi?
Chapman.
Yes.
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodugem.
Yes. Thank you. Moving along to reports from committees, boards, or commissions. Charlie?
This morning, Combined Dispatch met, and it was reported that the 25 budget has been approved. We're also moving our provider from AT&amp;T and Digital. That should be happening first quarter next year. We're also consolidating equipment support and circuit through in digital. That will hopefully cut down finger pointing and that sort of thing, go through one provider. And the nice thing about going from copper wire, which we're doing now, to fiber is the cost will be about half, should be more reliable, and we have two providers. Comcast is the prime, Metronet's the backup, so we can always find a way out of town one way or the other, case there's a problem with the circuit. And then it was noted that we're always looking for dispatchers. Anybody knows anybody who wants to get involved in public service, public safety, send them our way. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Paul, any updates from committees?
Nothing here.
Dwight?
Nothing here.
Todd?
Nothing here.
Andrew?
Nothing.
Dave? Emma, from that breaking thing?
Yeah, so last week, we discussed in our meeting about Tinktown Hall, and we all felt that that went really well. We had a lot of feedback and a lot of different things here from different people, so that was really encouraging. Overall, we sensed that the kids in our school, our peers, really just want a way to connect with one another, and a way that was mentioned most often, I would say, was something to do with nature, just somewhere where we can be outside and community with each other just to grow closer. So, yeah, as we continue, we're really hoping that we can create an idea and a plan to just make more ways that we can hang out outside and just connect with one another. So, yeah.
Thank you. Not aware of any petitions or comments from citizens this evening?
Not this evening. Thank you.
Okay. And not aware of any old business? Move along to consideration under new business. First reading of ordinance 20C24. Kristi?
Ordinance 20C24, this ordinance if adopted would provide additional funding to the general police other supplies line 1101-010241, and the ARPA unappropriated 2402-001900, and the Riverboat 4437-001900. The police is $2,408.59. ARPA is $266,164. And the Riverboat is $798,000. A total additional of $1,066,572.59.
Thank you, Kristi. Is there a motion to bring ordinance 20C24 to the floor for consideration?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. For council's benefit tonight, we do have several members of the administration to present. First up, I want to invite Captain Elliott to come forward and present on the police item regarding from the General Fund.
Ours is the smallest number of the three. A lot smaller.
This time.
Important nonetheless.
Important nonetheless. So every year, I tabulate all the forfeiture dollars that are brought in through drug interdiction and things of that nature. This year was $2,408.59. We'd like to bring that money back to the Police Department out of the General Fund for the purchase of three portable breath testing instruments and one handheld radar unit. Actually goes a little bit more than that, but we have funding and other equipment line out of the balance. So we're asking that the $2,408.59 be released from the General Fund back to the Police Department to make the purchases of those four.
Thank you. Any questions by council members regarding the appropriation from the General Fund for supplies for the police?
Yeah, how accurate are the radar detectors now?
Say that again.
How accurate are the radar detectors now?
Well, we calibrate every year, so they're within one mile an hour.
You're not getting out of that ticket, Todd.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Captain. For the record, I do not know if Todd has any outstanding tickets. Next, I want to invite Director Cutress to come forward and present on the two projects for the appropriation from ARPA funds in accordance with the plan presented to council a few years ago.
Yeah, so the two ARPA funds projects that were in there for the ARPA additional appropriation were the KFC lift station. That was a lift station that we relocated. It used to be on the south side of Hounstein Road next to Starbucks. That lift station reached the end of its useful life. We relocated it. In order to build it the size it needs to be, we had to relocate it across the road in front of Monroe Muffler. That construction is now complete. Some of that money is essentially paying that final invoice is to close out that project. The rest of that ARPA additional appropriation is going towards the, an invoice on the Stoltz Road and 500 North Trail and roadway project. So that one is also almost, it's all final touch-up items, some signage and that kind of thing. So we are very near wrapping that project up as well. That's where those two additional appropriations go to for paying those bills.
Questions by council members regarding either of the two projects? Okay. Thank you, Director Cutress. The third item is out of Riverboat, and it pertains to design for proposed new fire station. So at this time, I want to invite Chief Johnson to come forward. We do have some outside representatives as well that are working with the city on this. And for council members' benefit, these funds in Riverboat are available for this purpose and not needed for other items in the capital plan, and so they are available at council's discretion to appropriate for this. So Chief Johnson?
Good evening. Here to, we've been talking to, let me back up here. Okay. So start this process of building a new fire station. We've talked to you guys about this before, what the needs of the fire department is. Our station out there on Condon Street is over 50 years old, and it doesn't meet the needs that we have now, that what we need that department or that station to do for. So we've been in talks probably within the last four to five years with the mayor and that, talking about getting a new fire station up on the north side. The land was purchased back in the Abbott administration, probably 20-some years ago for that purpose, and that land still sits there today, and the city owns that land. Where that land is, is a really good spot for us to put that new station. Gets us completely off of the east side of town. We're about as far as we can be from the north side where all the industry is going now, especially with the new industrial park. Our response times are going to be so much better from being on the north side, where more of the industry is going, more actually, more of the population. If we get the new apartments and that going off Hounstein and that, we're going to have a lot more need for us to be up there and respond quicker. We are literally busting at the seams out there at that other station, not to mention the amount of money we have put in just to keep it up every year. We have things that are constantly breaking, and there's some parts of that, that station that just can't be fixed. It was just poor design, and it was, it was, it's been useful for what it was built for, but we basically, we've outused what we can of it. So we set out, we got a selection committee, we invited four different architectural firms to propose to us of what they had to offer us to build us a new station. Out of those four, the selection committee had a process where we scored each of them. And in the end, we came out and we picked Shive Hattery, which we have representatives from Shive Hattery here tonight. They have a presentation ready for us to show to you guys and kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at. So we're asking to, between Mike and Adam and I, we've been working with Shive Hattery to figure out a contract, work with them to do that, so that's what we're asking for tonight, $798,000 to contract with Shive Hattery to design this new station for us.
And I know, Director Cutress, if you could speak a little bit to the structure of the contract for council's benefit of the exact partnership that we would have with Shive Hattery?
Yeah, so what Shive Hattery will do for us is they'll take this from the beginning all the way through to the end, from design, conceptual designs where we are right now, all the way through full design, the bidding process, all the way through construction, inspection during that construction, administration, questions from the contractor, all of that, all the way through to the end of construction, reviewing pay apps, the whole thing, very similar to what we did with the police station when we built that just a few years ago. So they'll be with us from the beginning to the end. This contract covers that entire lifespan. It is not just the design fee, it's all the construction, administration, all the paperwork and everything, from the beginning to the end. We're looking at approximately a year or so of design, and then after that, the scenario into that. So this $798,000 wouldn't just be all expended within one year, it would be spread over the lifetime of, from now through the end of a fire station being built, where the fire station is usable. As Tony mentioned, we started with a selection process, worked through that, no different than we do with any of our other large projects like this, where we solicit qualified design professionals to assist us with this. After reviewing everything, Shive Hattery stood out well above, and all of our process with them so far has been great, so we're happy to have them onboard and move the process forward. So if there's any questions for Tony or I, I can answer those real quick before I invite Andrew up here from Shive.
Have we done anything with them before, this group?
We have not. We specifically solicited for design professionals who are very well-versed in the fire station arena. Any of our previous architects that we've used before, they don't have that fire station experience. We wanted to bring in somebody specific. These people have done quite a few. They're actually finishing one up right now in Mitchell. I guess with that, I'd bring Andrew up here to kind of walk through where they're at and their process on this.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the Huntington community. I'm Andrew Avery with Shive Hattery Architecture and Engineering, a national firm based out of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, but we have offices in Indiana and South Bend. I'm out of the South Bend office. In particular, I focus in fire station design, civic work. Been practicing architecture for about 20 years now, 25 years. Been doing this for a while. One of the things I wanted to reiterate that the chief was talking about is there's many communities across the nation, they're in the very same boat. They've outgrown their own station, the structure's been coming in adequate. This, and number one priority is always response time to the community. That hasn't changed. So when we focus on fire station design, we identify those priorities. And lo and behold, that was the very first priority we came up on our list when we were talking during our programmatic session. Response time. We have to be able to respond to the community, serve the community. So when we think about that in fire station design, that becomes very evident on how we lay out the station. So as we go into some of these concepts, they're at a very high level, we're not to the point where we're saying we're ready to put our shovel in the ground, but just keep that in mind that we are on a very high-level approach. So objectives for this conversation, I'd like to review a little bit of a programmatic process on where we've been to date. I'd like to talk about conceptual designs that we have today at a very high level, are conceptual, and then review project costs, because everybody's going to ask how much is it, right? And then a little bit look ahead on what our process is in the future. So here's the typical project timeline. I know it's a little hard to read up here, but we're currently at the first circle, and this first step is critical, very crucial in fire station design, as well as many other designs. We're identifying the space needs, the requirements and everything like that that need to be in the station, both on an operational standpoint and that number one priority, response time. So in every step of the way, we also have milestone checks. Budget update, QAQC, both internally and with our consultants, and then also an owner review, so that you guys know every step of the process of where this project is headed. This goes through programming, schematic design, design development, construction documents, bidding, and construction, just like Adam had mentioned. Services for this evening that we're discussing, consider all included. Do want to highlight that there are some anticipated dates on when we move into these milestones. We are looking at pursuing into the schematic design in December. We're not quite there yet, that's why bubble number one isn't quite shaded in, in the blue. So where we're looking at maybe having a bidding season of next July, being ready to put a shovel in the ground potentially next fall, which would be ideal to get a head start before the cold winter months, right? So what have we done in programmatic deliverables so far? Well, we have identified fire department culture, we've identified priorities, we've identified spaces and put them into a matrix to give them size, the appropriate function for on them, identifying relationships with spaces. How do these spaces need to interact throughout the department? Whether it's a communal aspect of, you know, the heart of the station is inside the kitchen, many aspects, we sit around the table when we break bread, that's that camaraderie, right? That's the cultural aspect. But what's the quickest route to the truck room? How do we access that to respond? The goal would be to be over 90 seconds in a vehicle, so let's think about where that relationship is. And then also identifying ways that we can function in and work in training throughout the station, because we need to be prepared, right? We need to have our first responder table ready. So as you can see, a lot of these have checkmarks. That's where we are in the process. We're at about 60 to 70% during, through the current phase. So there's a few more milestones that we need to develop. We've already developed a few concepts of the building. We need to hash those out, talk a little bit more, test them, if you will, look at flow diagrams, look at relationships matrix, and actually score each one of these designs that I'm going to show you, and see what makes sense on a data-based response and say, okay, this is how we narrow down our project. And then we'll have a final report. So a little bit about the concept design. Currently, we have four scenarios that I'm going to show. There's two options for a one-story, there's two options for a two-story. One stories in fire station design gives aid to being faster response. I'll tell you why. You have that 3:00 AM wake-up call of an alert. I've got to be out of bed, into the truck room, ready to go. But navigate through a station on a one-story, it mean the difference of an injury. The difference of sleep deprivation of fumbling my way to the actual truck room. But there's ways that we can mitigate that if we do decide to go for a two-story, of how we can navigate that a little bit efficiently. So I'll start off with this, and I'm just going to talk high-level about the station design. We have some boards that we brought along, so I offer you, if you have time afterwards, to come look at the boards, study a little bit, give some recommendations of what your thoughts are. This is a two-story station option. In any of these station options, we have a few things that are in common. Number one, bad contaminants on-site turnout gear responding from a fire. We know that there are cancer rates within our fire industry. We know that those contaminants come back to the station on the gear. That's number one. Number two is, even if they're washed, there's still chemicals within said gear that's off-gassing that are still bad for the occupants. So we want to separate those from clean space of the living quarters, if you will, from the station side. So the way we do that is we separate the area, put storage across here for turnout gear, decom laundry next to it, so this area becomes basically support for the apparatus and the truck storage, and then two airlocks. Airlocks are important, because when we pressurize them with positive pressure, it keeps some of those contaminants out. Negative pressure inside the truck turnout gear room expels those out into the environment away from the occupants. Safe for the occupants outdoors, but you understand. So the other portion of this fire station is the component of administration. So in this two-story option, you have a main entrance on the first floor, we have a training room for training, and then we have living quarters, which is in this light of wood. We have a few items here, such as mechanical, electrical, stuff like that. The items in the red areas are meant for training, so fitness between the living quarters and the truck room, easy to respond. Training room over here, right down the hallway, so you can respond. Kitchen and dining, straight out to the truck room, easy to respond. And then incorporating a training tower, so they can rise, riser testing and stuff like that, and doing exercises and training towers right within the station. Plus, we can use it multiple to say, okay, if it is a two-story option, that's one of our second ways out of the second story. Out of a, second story area, administration's kind of in the lilac purple, and then sleeping quarters. Sleeping quarters, we try to keep separated from the noisy areas, right? We're talking about sleep deprivation and ailments such as heart attacks, and stuff like that within the industry, we want to make sure that people are getting their adequate sleep when they can, so that they can fully respond. So that's just a high level of how we lay out these stations. Here's what that two-story might look like. Very high level, just form, maybe highlights of red, because we like fire engine red, right, chief? Single-story option, same kind of layout, just a little bit sprawled out, right? So we still have sleeping quarters that are kind of closer to the truck room, still have our communal spaces closer to the truck room, and then administration is out towards the front. By the way, if we consider that, you know, uses of this training room also impact the community for like CPR training, other community meetings such as like Juanus Club and stuff like that, that's towards the front. The way we can do that is we can actually secure off some of that area if it's not used, so that keeps the fire operations separate from the community. Here's what that one might look like as a one-story. A little different, just sprawled out. Here's another two-story option. This one's very linear in fashion, very rectangular, but yet similar design. On the first floor, still a similar truck bay set up, training towers over on this side. On this side, they have, our first floor being living quarters, fitness, and then here being administration, training room next to that. Second floor was just purely the sleeping quarters or the bunker. Here's what that form might look like. So we can push and play. What is best for the city of Huntington, some things that we're going to play around with as far as the vernacular of the building. Here's that one-story option. And you may notice that in both of the one-story options, there's a little bit of an angle to the building, because when we start sprawling out some of the footprint of the building, we also have to get it to fit on the site. Really haven't studied yet. That's the next step. Oh, and by the way, we need at least 50 feet to travel out into public before pulling out into a public way. Safer for responders in the engine, safer for the oncoming public, right? So that takes up a mountain on the site. We need a return drive, we need parking. This is why we can look at ways to be creative with the building shape to allow those onsite. Here's what that one might look like. Here's that question, right? What's it going to cost? So when we went through the process to identify the actual space requirements, we assigned sizes to them, very generically, based on industry standards of this is about the size of room. Function of that space. So what we identified in this is the administration area that I showed you in the plan. Right around 3,200 square feet. Apparatus bay, 9,200 square feet. Then we have building systems, so we have to factor in where we're going to put our building systems, and then on top of that, a circulation factor and then total. So right now, programmatically, we're looking at 20,300 square feet. Doesn't mean we have to be at that point, that means we can work down, or we look at the reason why we're there and to say, okay, this makes sense, we have to have this space around this. So what's it cost? Very high level, basically a look at where we are conceptually. Industry average standards in our area is approximately $550 to $600 a square foot, and that is ground-up stations, including site improvement, both site and building. So if you look at that roughly, approximately, it's about $11 million to $12, $12.2 million, just hard cost. Then you have to factor in the 30% above that for additional soft costs such as your AV budgets, your CMC budget, which we're looking at maybe doing that process on this delivery. Construction contingency, design contingency will come down. Right now, I'm holding at 10%, because we're in conceptual design. As we fine-tune the design, that'll go down to zero, because hopefully we've incorporated and done everything we need to into the design before it goes out to the building. Then, of course, we have site allowances, FFNE budgets, so anything that you turn the building over and shake out, those would be considered FFNE, so we need to fix it with furnishings. Owner contingency, I have that in there as well. Professional design fees, we've already got those included, that's what we're talking about tonight. Construction inspection allowance for contractors to, concrete for. The project cost budget, I want to say budget because it could go down, is between 14 and a half to 15.8. And that is looking at that 20,000 square foot size. Look ahead to next steps on what we would do in the process. So schematic design, we're going to take the stuff that we identified in programming, our conceptual plans, our room identification sheets, our flow diagrams, and we're going to start developing a schematic set, floor plans. Floor plans, cross-sections, building elevations to really understand the systems of the project. We'll do a comprehensive code review, which is important to make sure that we understand that. And then we'll start coordinating in our build systems such as structural, mechanical, electric. By the way, we are doing a high-level review of the certain programming. So it wasn't just architectural. It's also getting our building engineers to say, okay, what systems do we need to have in here? What kind of lighting are you looking for? Kind of these aspects are you looking for? Once approved, we moved into design development, which is just a fine term to say we're refining the schematic design documents. Oh, but we're also doing more with materials. Now we're starting our specifications. Now we can start talking with the construction manager a little bit more in the meat and potatoes of the project and say, hey, where do you feel we can come down on cost on some of these materials? And then rolling in construction documents, basically working the build set and specifications to go out for bidding. Bidding, assist you with selection of contractor. If we go with the CMC process, that'll be determined beforehand. But we'll still be bidding out subcontractors to get competitive bidding. Manage the bidding process. We'll work with preparation of bid documents, plan review submissions to the HJ with engineering and that, Board of Public Works, as well as the state of Indiana. And answer contractor questions and change requests and stuff like that. Construction administration, we'll oversee the construction process during construction, Adam had mentioned. Review those pay applications. We'll be coordinating requests for information from the contractor and so forth. And then we'll do final inspection and punch list and closeout as well. Open up for further questions.
So if you've done these, which is, works best for, I mean, our situation is going to be the two-story or the one-story. For the two-story, you're going to have less have to heat the front, or the top, I mean. And with the ones, and you're going to take up less room. How much land do we have out there? How many acres?
Less, yeah, a little less than three acres.
Okay. And that location, have we thought about the traffic? Will be good? Okay. So what's your, what are your, you know, justifications for a two-story compared to one-story then? Which one do you prefer or which one do you think is going to be better for?
So two-story, once we get into the programming of the site, it's going to kind of drive that either it's a two-story or a one-story. Reason why I say that is because I mentioned the apparatus driver, we need return drives, we need parking area for people, parking area for administrative staff. So that 2.96 acre, I believe it is, starts reducing. May impact a building, say, we need to go two-story to fit everything on the site. So that's where it's going to play back and forth. Now, these one-story options, we put an angle at it because our site is so much of a, little bit of a shotgun-style site on that site there. So maybe we can play with the angle to still keep a one-story and still allow enough traffic and flow around it. Number one, we want to respond quickly, safely. Our design focus is safety, efficiency, overall quality of life. That's it. So thinking about all those aspects is going to determine whether we go one-story, two-story. Now, budgetary, you're absolutely right. It could be more expensive to go to two-story. It could be more expensive to stay at single-story depending on the footprint and the efficiencies on site. So that's where we're going to have to look at competing demands of both design, function, functionality, number one. And then also budgetary. Great question.
You, you mentioned approaching the project from a CMC standpoint. You've not made that decision yet?
Correct. You guys have had the experience.
Yeah, I, I, I thought that worked great with the police station.
Yeah, we, we use that, sorry, we use that process on the police station. There are some great benefits to that over the traditional design bid-build process where the architect draws up the plans, we bid it out, we select the lowest contractor, we build the station. There are some risks to that. There's some risk to the CMC process as well. But the, I think the benefits far outweigh it. We get to bring in a contractor, a reputable contractor that we want to work with early on in the process. And that's where we start to get into some of the value engineering stuff and start to drive the cost down on this a little bit. So there's definite benefits to that, and that's why we are leaning towards going that way, absolutely.
Is the, is the council aware what CMC stands for?
No.
So CMC is construction manager as constructor. And basically, it's a self-performing construction management. Work with them all the time, okay? So other than just a general contractor, which bids for your prime contractors other than mechanical plumbing, they may also self-perform one of those prime contracts themselves. For instance, general trades or framing, some of that efforts. So the best thing about CMC process is the pre-construction services. So not only is it just architect's language about budgeting, about, you know, cost control, but at each one of these milestones, that CM is working with the ownership and the architect and designer. We're feeding and fueling off of each other as far as ideas. Like, what do you think about this building product? What do you think about this? Do you think we can find a less expensive product that aids us the same amount of durability? Let's talk about that. So it's a checks and balances system. Basically, at every one of these milestones, when I say budget update, usually that's been the architect in a true design bid-build function. We go out to our estimators that we hire, third-party, we get an estimate back. It's still an estimate. It's not really looking at and talking to subcontractors along the way that I work day in and day out. Whereas a construction manager, constructor, or a CMR process at risk has a group of subcontractors that go out there and talk to them on a basis of saying, hey, what are you seeing for cost? Hey, what do you think about this system? What would you include in the price point for this as my budgetary price point? These are the documents along the way. Homicidal design documents, sending those out to those subcontractors and saying, where are we budgetary? And then going back to the architect and the owner and saying, this is where we are currently. So not only are you getting that checks and balances of looking at constructability, but now you have somebody that's actually checking it along the way so that you know where the project stands budgetarily. A little bit better than just the design-build approach with speaking to the architect.
As I recall with the police station, we hit a point in the process where it was a challenge getting bricklayers, for example. But the company that we had engaged have bricklayers on staff. I mean, that's part of what they do. So they were able to bring in their people, keep the project timeline going, so we didn't lose any time trying to find bricklayers. But things like that occurred. Like I said, it was, it was a good experience with the police station. It worked out very well.
Sounds to me like it's way better communication than the other way because I've dealt with the people in the trailers before. And they say this, and then their guys do this.
Right.
So it sounds to me like that's a little better.
Yeah, it worked well with us, yeah. Okay, Adam?
No, yeah, Charlie is absolutely right. Bricklaying was one of the, one of the items on that, that Hagerman ended up self-performing because of costs and getting outside bricklaying people to do it. So you're right, Charlie, that was, that was absolutely one of...
Okay, on this 14 to 15 million dollar project, what kind of timeline are we talking here? I mean, is this in today's, today's market or when are we talking about doing this?
Great question.
Sorry?
Great question. You know, obviously, we can't, I don't have a crystal ball sitting around as far as what the economy could happen, right? We know that we're getting a new administration. Nobody really knows what could happen with prices in the industry this next coming year. But what I can tell you is this is current industry ballpark prices of what we're experiencing. So even Mitchellwaukees Fire Station Two just finished up in the last few weeks. We knew what those costs of square feet are. We have another one that we just completed as well in the area as well. So we're seeing that across the board. Now, there are some municipalities that are more expensive than ours, but we are seeing around that standpoint. And what that includes is looking at us building within the next, starting in the shovel, within the next year and a half, year and a half, you know what I'm saying? So if we can start bidding in July and put a ground in the shovel next fall, I would hope that these numbers would stay just where they are without industry or inflation factor.
So it's up to us how quick we can get this thing going, correct?
Time is always an importance when trying to build. Now, there's caveat to that. If we try to fast-track it and don't prepare accordingly in the design, short-change design, you end up with tire change work. Something that wasn't planned or thought through. And that is the importance of us going through this programmatic stage, is to understand everything at first. Discover, design, and then deliver. Any others?
So Chief, you have a, you have a team that's working with the architectural firm established and they, can you talk about that process?
Yeah, we have a building committee. I've got officers, I've got my administration, I've got officers, I've got firefighters. Tried to get a little old, different bunch of guys in there that had experience on the fire department, had construction experience, had things like that, that we could use everybody's knowledge and get the best bang for the buck. We've actually been around to quite a few fire departments, especially down around the Indianapolis area. We visited Carmel, we visited Westfield. So we've been, we've been working on this for a year and a half, two years where we actually went out. I took two, two firefighters with me to a conference. We spent a conference, that's where we met Andrew and some other architects down there. It was just basically a firefighter, they were, a conference for building firehouses. We, we learned a lot of, a lot of valuable information there and kind of decided how we needed to proceed to start this all out. So we've been, we've been working on this for probably a year and a half just to get to this point here, even, even prior to the talks that we've had a few years ago. We've actually been, had a committee and worked on it and tried to figure out what are the best needs of the fire department and how do we, how do we get there?
Well, we, we don't do this every, every year.
No.
So we'd like to make sure we get it as, as good as we can.
A lot of things we're doing here, the size of it, things like that, I know it looks, you compare it to the size of the department or the size of the station we have now that we're replacing it. And it, it is larger, but that's the other thing I'm trying to do. I'm trying to make sure that we cover everything for the future. I mean, I expect this to be a 50 to 75-year station, hopefully more. So we don't know what the department's going to be. Fifty years ago, I don't think anybody would have thought the department was going to be where they are now. So everything that we're trying to do here is build for the future. We're, you know, we're making sure that the, the apparatus bay is, is large enough to support apparatus. Apparatus is getting larger and larger. Every truck we get is bigger than the last truck we had. So we're just trying to do that. The living quarters, if you notice, we have separate dorms, and we're doing that for, and so, to make sure that we have male and female firefighters that can live together and not have to worry about separate locker rooms and that. We have, everybody has their own dorm. It also helps with sleep deprivation and things like that. So we're trying to think down the road. And 80% of new, new fire stations are all going with the private dorms now. And it's, it's actually, when you do it the way we're setting up and Andrew suggested with the restrooms and things like that, we take away the large locker rooms and the multi-showers and things like that. We just have four small individual restrooms with showers in them. So we're trying to, trying to make everything for the future wherever the apartment ends up going.
And I know that you and I talked a little bit, I suggested, what, you know, how, how's Aetna designed? And you pointed that the state-of-the-art now is that decontamination area, which Aetna doesn't have.
Correct.
But since that facility was built, we've learned a lot about...
Yeah, that was 24 years ago, and we didn't have, we didn't have the knowledge that we do now, how cancer affects firefighters and how easily that all the carcinogen, and it's basically because of the building materials that we use today. It's this, this right here, you know, it's, it's that stuff that burns off and puts all the carcinogens in the air, traps them in our gear, we go back to the station. I mean, when I started on the station over 32 years ago, we grabbed our bunker pants and we went up to our bed and we dropped them beside our bed and we slept all night. I mean, that would, we don't even let bunker gear come inside the living quarter. That's just a difference in just 30 years since I've been on, that we, we've learned and we're, we're trying to do things better. And we're going to learn a lot more as, as we go on. But what we know now, if we don't take those precautions that we do know and instill them in a new station to protect our guys, then we're kind of, kind of wasting our money.
Also looking at areas that is a retreat from the shock. The hard scenarios that they have, these men and women have to go out into work through. So the suicide rates up, we know that that's a common thing that's happening in their industry now. There's spaces within the station that are designed to help relieve that. It's a decompression zone. Not only is it individual bunk rooms, but it could also be a console room or a quiet room. It also could be a mother's room for female firefighters. There are spaces where we're trying to look at as a multi-use function, but also improves the quality of life within the station. Because we need to address the cancer rates, we need to address the suicide rates, we need to address the cardiac arrest situation because of the shock and awe of getting that call right away and responding. How we approach it.
Council members, two other items for your benefit this evening, because if you're anything like me, you're experiencing the early stages of sticker shock that I went through a few weeks ago. So when we think about this and the reason why we're bringing you an additional appropriation out of Riverboat, Riverboat funds are derived from a statewide distribution of taxes that are gathered from gambling establishments throughout the state. And so as we're looking at this initial outlay on design, we're looking to draw from funds that come to us directly from the state, from other economic activities. So we're not looking to put local property taxes or income taxes in the hopper on this. At a later date, once further design is completed, we're able to bring you more information on what next steps would look like in a funding plan if we're able to move forward with it. Because as noted in the presentation, we are entering into a time of transition, and I, I would hesitate to predict where we will be a year from now. So once we have more information, we'll be able to make that determination on whether or not to give the project a green light and proceed from there. Additionally, it was helpful for me to learn that the various architectural firms that were brought in to interview with the committee, were all providing estimates in that same range. So this is what we're seeing in the marketplace across the board if you're going to take the elements of safety, efficiency, and quality of life seriously. So some helpful, what was helpful for me is food for thought. Hopefully, it's helpful for you this evening.
So we haven't explored, we, we can't explore where we're going to get the money from until we know more, correct? Is that what you're saying?
As far as the overall funding plan and budget for construction?
Yeah.
We want to get design locked down first before we would go to that. Yeah, there, broadly speaking, there are two different programs that we could look at. One through USDA, one through Indiana Bond Bank. Bond Bank will do 20 years at 4% right now. USDA will go 30 to 40 years. And the university used that in their Plex, they're at a 2% rate on that. So at that point, given the standard history of our economy, it's pretty good money at that point.
Okay.
And rates. But again, we want to make sure that we actually know the number we're going in with and that we've got a secure plan on that before we bring that back to you. we've got a secure plan on that before we bring that back to you. So at this point, again, it is just the appropriation for the design and partnership with Shive Hattery to continue walking with us through the process.
Further question or discussion by council members? Okay, so with that, we'll call the question in favor of Ordinance 20C24 on first reading.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Rensburger?
Yes.
Rodigam?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Thank you. And given the nature of timing for these things, I believe we do need to request a suspension of the rules to allow for second and final reading this evening.
Second.
Motion and second regarding suspension of the rules. Further discussion and consideration by council members. Not hearing any, we'll call the question in favor of suspension of the rules.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Rensburger?
Yes.
Rodigam?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
And with that, then, is there a motion for second and final reading of Ordinance 20C24?
Moved.
Second. Motion and second. Further discussion and consideration of Ordinance 20C24 on second and final reading. Not hearing any at this time, we'll call the motion in favor of approval of Ordinance 20C and 20, 20C24 on second and final reading. Christie?
Pike?
Yes.
Rensburger?
Yes.
Rodigam?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, council members. Next item under miscellaneous. Christie, October financials.
Yes. So speaking of financials, we have 7.5 million in the general fund. Motor vehicle highway has 1.8. Local road and street has 252,000. MVH restricted has 504,000. Park and rec has 120,900. Aviation 30,000. And landfill has 79,421. Riverboat, or seat at first, is 1.1 million 64,000. Riverboat has 1.6. And then this additional is to appropriate the 798,000. Rainy day has 720,000. So our balances are good going into the end of the year. We'll be getting December settlement, mid-December. So, yeah, I feel confident with the numbers we have to work with.
Any questions for Christie on financials? A few items for council's consideration. Want to recognize some folks in our community and in the room. First off, want to give our accolades to the Varsity Singers on their Pump and Plenty performances this weekend. It was a great show. We also want to recognize our sectional champion Huntington North Vikings football team. And for those who are able to join the trip to go see them face off against East Noble again, please join us on Friday evening. And finally, yesterday, we had the installation and dedication of Iwo Jima Memorial on the north side of Memorial Park. So we want to recognize John Shortridge and his volunteers with the Veterans Day 5K for raising well over $130,000 towards that monument and the installation of that. So again, a lot of good things and a lot of good people here in Huntington. And it's a lot more fun here, isn't it? So with that, anything else for the good of the order? Not hearing anything. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
What? Too fast?
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
You need to let the mayor finish his question.